Chairman Kogler, we're ready to go here on city staff side.
Good evening, everybody. This is Chairperson Mark Kogler, and I would like to welcome you to the Paso Robles Planning Commission of May 25, 2021. At the beginning of each meeting, there's some information that we need to share that's listed on the agenda, and I'll do that now. Please note that due to the COVID-19 emergency and in compliance with state and county shelter at home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, Planning Commission meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. A video stream of Planning Commission meeting presentations will be livestreamed and available play later on YouTube or by accessing the following link: www.prcity.com/youtube. Rather than attending in person, project applicants and members of the public must call 805-865-7276 to participate via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting at 6:30 p.m. Or written public comments can be submitted via email to planning@prcity.com. Written comments received prior to noon on the day of the meeting will be posted as an addendum to the agenda online at www.prcity.com/AgendaCenter/Planning- Commission-5. That's the numeral five. If you're submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item. I'd like to go back and simply repeat the phone number again because we do have some items on the agenda tonight that people may be interested in sharing their views on. The call-in number is 805-865-7276, and that will be shared as the meeting goes on this evening as well. With that, we will move to our second item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask Commissioner Jorgensen if you'd be kind enough to lead us all in the pledge.
Yes, I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, staff.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
President.
Commissioner Christensen?
President.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Gibson?
Here.
Commissioner Neal?
Here.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Here.
Chairperson Kogler?
I am here, and Warren, your voice sounds a little distant and a little echoey. I don't know if others are hearing that as well.
Yes, it's very distant and echoey on my end, too.
Okay, let me do a sound check here in the... Dave, can you check your mic?
Testing, testing.
Got Dave's sound.
Same as you. It's distant and kind of echoey.
It sounds like we're picking up the room and not you individually.
Okay, how does mine sound?
You're clear, Jessica.
We're using yours.
It looks like it might just be an issue with Warren's microphone, so please bear with us as Warren and I share.
Sounds good. Let me know when you're ready to proceed.
Okay, how's that sound?
Actually, it's the same.
That doesn't make any sense. How's that sound?
Same once again, Warren.
Try that one.
And how do I sound?
Jessica, you're unmuted, too. I don't know if you know that.
Say again, please.
I was just saying you were unmuted. I didn't know if it was picking up from you being unmuted as well. I don't know.
Okay, how does this sound from my end right now?
You're better than Warren. There's a little... We can get by with this, I think. It's just not the clarity that usually we have.
Okay.
So it appears that we've got some sort of technical issue with the sound system in City Hall, so we'll try to make do. So if you can't hear us, let us know, and we'll talk as loud as possible.
Okay, thank you. It's not a volume thing, Warren, so much as it is kind of the echo factor, so we'll see how well it works. We'll go with it. We'll test it. Staff introductions, please.
Yes, Warren Fraice, Community Development Director. With me tonight's Darren Nash, our city planner; David Athie, city engineer; Katie Bannister, our assistant city planner; and Jessica Ferguson is our admin assistant, along with Ashley Peterson, also our admin assistant.
So Ditas Esperanza is also here today, Capital Projects Engineer.
Okay, are there any other staff members that haven't identified themselves yet or been identified by Warren?
Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief, joined by Andy Harris, Fire Marshal and Town Chief.
Great, welcome. Seems like all of the voices coming from staff have the same attribute of being echoey and a little difficult to understand, but we'll stick with it. Next item on the agenda is general public comments regarding items not on the agenda. I don't show anybody present to speak. Is there anybody there, Jessica?
We do not have anybody for public comment at this time.
Very good, thank you. Seeing that, we will move on to the next item, Item F on the agenda, which are agenda items proposed to be tabled or rescheduled. Do we have any of those?
There are none.
Very good, thank you.
Chairperson Kogler, if I might make a comment. This is Commissioner Christensen. I think it might help, too, that if anybody has an open mic that they muted, it might help because you're not going as well, too.
As well? Interesting, because you're coming through pretty clear to me. So yeah, I mean, normal courses, if you're not speaking, please keep yourself muted. Thanks for the tip. Okay, we will move into our first public hearing of the night, I guess. It's Plan Development, PD 21-04, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-16, Oak Tree Removal Permit, OTR 21-09, Tentative Parcel Map, PR 21-0016, and PR 20... or P21, excuse me, -0030. The project is located at 2924 Union Road. The applicant is the City of Paso Robles Emergency Services Department. Do we have a staff report, please?
Good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is Darren Nash, city planner. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you, Darren. It's a little soft, but we can hear you.
All right. So tonight, we have the Union Road Safety Training Center. This is a project that a number of people are on the team tonight. We've got Wallace Associates or Wallace Group, I'm sorry, Wallace Group, and we have Omni Design Group. Wallace Group is the engineering firm helping design this project. Tom Ray of Omni Group with his team is working on the architectural plans. We have Chief Stornetta and Chief Harris here as well, and also Ditas Esperanza, Capital Projects Engineer. There's a lot of things going on concurrently with this project, including designing the project for construction so that the point when the project is approved ultimately by the city council, this project is soon to start, project plans, submittal for permits and grading permits. So a lot of things are happening with this project, but the first stop here, actually, the second stop, is the Planning Commission, since this has been to the Development Review Committee. So tonight, what we're looking for is the Planning Commission to review the list of entitlements that were mentioned and make any recommendation to the city council. Since this project is a city-owned property, it's going to be the fire station three, the safety training center that will ultimately have some police department facilities as well. This is a city facility that's going to go up to the city council for approval, and also there are a request for some oak tree removals that typically go up to the city council as well. So tonight, we are looking for the Planning Commission to review the project, listen to the presentation, ask questions, and make a recommendation to the city council. With that, George Aguilar of Wallace Group has the presentation he is going to start off. He will be able to introduce his team as well as the folks involved with Omni Design, and then also related to this project is Out House in Mead where the biologist for the project. So with that, I will let George begin the presentation.
Thank you, Darren. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. My name is George Aguilar. I'm a principal with Wallace Group, and I am the project manager for the design team. As Darren mentioned, we have the civil engineering component as well as Omni Design Group for the architectural component. We also have landscape architecture component within our Wallace Group team staff and a lot of the details that are covered with this project. Next slide, please. I think this slide and a few subsequent to this will be covered by the fire department staff that are attending the meeting, so I'll hand it over to them.
Good evening, Chairperson Kogler and members of the commission, Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief. As noted on this slide, the fire department has several immediate needs. The needs identified here have been approved by the city council as a priority for the J-20 funding. The proposed fire station before you tonight is an essential part of meeting these immediate needs identified before you. Next slide, please. The city council adopted response goal is that we respond to all... Can we mute the city hall, please? You're echoing back now. Sorry about that, I apologize. The city council adopted response goal is that we respond to all emergency calls in four minutes or less 90% of the time. Due to the number of annual calls we respond to and the fact that we have currently the two busiest fire stations in San Luis Obispo County, we are only able to achieve the city council response goal 56% of the time. As you can see from the graph in the upper left of the slide, our 90th percentile response time is seven minutes and 44 seconds. That's three minutes and 44 seconds longer than the adopted goal. There are additional contributing factors to our extended response times. These include simultaneous calls and geographic travel distances. Simultaneous calls are those times when all of our resources are committed to an emergency and unavailable to respond to the next call. Looking at the graph on the lower right side of the slide, the pink line is the number of simultaneous calls we had per month in 2020. The red line is the number of times per month we had no resources available to respond if you called 911. In 2020, we had no resources available to respond to a 911 call 179 times. During these times, we are heavily reliant on our neighboring fire departments to assist us. Adding this third fire station will allow us to minimize these contributing factors. Next slide, please. This graph illustrates the geographical travel distances and travel times from our two current fire stations. The area in blue is the fire station one's four-minute response zone, and the area in yellow is fire station two's four-minute response zone. All areas outside the shaded area are contributing factors to why we cannot meet the city council's response goal. As you can see, there's a large gap in response coverage in the city's north and northeast regions. These regions affect Riverbank, the Riverbank area, the airport area, the future Chandler Ranch, and Highway 46 East. Next slide, please. This graph illustrates how the addition of Fire Station Three will fill the voids identified on the previous slide in the north and northeast regions of the city. The different color-shaded areas represent response times. For example, the green-shaded area is one minute, light-green two minutes, orange three minutes, and red four minutes. Next slide, please. Based on historical data, we anticipate a 3.8 increase in annual call volume for the next 10 years. This projection does not include any future development or population increases. We estimate our annual responses to increase 41% once the projects currently in the city's project pipeline are complete. Approval of Fire Station Three tonight will allow us to keep pace with current service demands and prepare for future city expansion. Next slide, please. And finally, this graph illustrates how all three fire stations combined provide an equal distribution of emergency services' response resources throughout the majority of the city. As you can see from this slide, the completion of Fire Station Three is a vital part to providing the resources needed to meet the current service demands of our community. That concludes my section of the presentation. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Nash.
Thank you, Chief, and from here, George is going to go through the next set of slides or possibly Tom Ray.
So this... Is this where you want me to come in, George?
Yes, Ditas, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Yes, this is Ditas Esperanza. I'm the Capital Projects Engineer for the City of Paso Robles. I work in Public Works. So I've been tasked to assist with the development and ultimate construction of this project. So the way we envision it is the first phase is the initial phase is the mass grading of the project as shown on the left side of your screen, and it includes the construction of Ardmore Road. There's also a water line that's going to go in Ardmore Road, includes the sewer line on the north side adjacent to the property on the west, several detention basins to address stormwater flow. So our goal is to get this graded and ready to go come September, October, November, December, so that in the meantime, the Phase One station, which is the darkest, the darker gray there or the dark green, that's the first building that will be constructed to house fire team because they... Jonathan didn't go into this, but maybe he can tell us now. There's a SAFER grant that the city accepted, and based on that, we're required to have these facilities ready for them so that they can move in there and start working for the city. Maybe at this time, Jonathan, you want to talk about the SAFER grant?
Thank you, Ditas. So the city accepted a SAFER grant for about $1.1 million, and what that grant contributed to us was we hired three firefighters that are paid for the first three years at 100%. So there's absolutely no cost to the city. Part of the agreement to obtaining that SAFER grant was that we open a third fire station. So we would be in jeopardy of losing that grant if we did not occupy the Fire Station Three as soon as possible.
So that's why we're doing this in multiple phases, so we can get that Phase One station built so that they can stay there, and ultimately, that building will be converted to an actual training center with conference rooms and the like. And then the final building, which is the Phase Two, that's where the crew will then have their living quarters and things like that. But in the meantime, we need to get this SAFER grant, and so we're using that first-phase building construction to house them. And then at Phase Two, we will build the ultimate building for Fire Station, and also we're looking to perhaps doing another police substation, which is east of the ultimate Fire Station building. So with that phased approach, we hope that this will get us with moving quickly so we can get the people in that, accept the SAFER grant in a timely manner. I think there was a timeline that we needed to tap into that grant. That's why we're needing to work as quickly as possible. But as you can imagine, the design of that building and getting it constructed is timely, and so that's why we hope that by doing the grading plan while we're working on the final design of that first phase will buy us some time and get us to the point where we can get tapped into that SAFER grant in a manner that fulfills our obligation to receive that grant. So that's the phasing that's being envisioned for this project. And back to George.
Thank you, Ditas, and next slide, please. Well, our architect, Tom Ray, with Omni Design Group, is having some technical difficulties, so you'll have the civil engineer myself playing architect for this introduction. The project includes the construction of the City of Paso Robles Fire Station Number Three and the associated driveways, parking utilities, storm grain system, and landscaping improvements. The proposed plan includes preservation of a heritage oak tree on Union Road and a healthy tree in the southwest corner. There are three trees in moderate to poor health that will be removed, and Darren will be speaking to that at the latter part of the presentation. This project also includes a parcel map for the subdivision of the existing property. It's approximately eight acres, and rounded areas will be six and two, with the six-acre facility being the training center. In this slide, you could also see the simulation, the depiction of what the Phase One building would look like. It has a four-bay apparatus structure as well as the station component of the building. We also have the monument sign being shown on the... Thank you, Warren. So that's the simulation of it, and then the monument sign is being shown. That we'll get to in the layout and show where that's being proposed to be placed. It will show that it's the City of Paso Robles Safety and Training Center and not be specific about fire or police. Next slide, please. All right, in this slide, what we're looking at is a depiction of what the proposed improvements in the very beginning are, and in the grayed-out areas, what the second phase with the training area facilities. We have south on the left side of the slide and north, Union Road on the right side of the slide. So the darker components show what are to be built. It's a concrete driveway run, and coming in from Union Road, we have two driveways on the west side or the upper part. That driveway is meant to be an exit driveway for the emergency vehicles. And thank you. And then on the right side, or I'm sorry, the east side, lower part of that is the second driveway. That will be an entry for both emergency and public vehicles. The public will have a parking lot in front of the buildings, as you can see there, between the two driveways. And next slide, please. This is a depiction of what the ultimate facility might look like. It's the conceptual plan that shows additional facilities for the police department. The design has not yet happened, but these are concepts to show the feasibility and what a layout might look like. The police station is where the cursor is at the moment. There's a secure parking area for police personnel adjacent to that station, and to the south or to the left of that station, you can see that there's another secured parking area that would be an evidence storage area. To just the west of that, the large open area is the training facility. We'll have a tower and some very particular training facility, auxiliary facilities on either side of that training center, west and east. And you can also see that it includes the basins that would be there for all of the impermeable water treatment, water quality for these facilities and potentially any improvements that could be put on to the southerly parcel. That's that two parcel that would be a remainder parcel, either for city use or for sale and for private use. We also show here the extension of Ardmore Road from the south, current terminus, up to and connecting to Union Road. Next slide, please. These are the elevation views of what the building might look like on the top of the sheet. We show the proposed north elevation. This is the elevation that would be facing Union Road, that the public would see, sense the landscaping, but this is what the structure would look like. You can see we have a four-bay apparatus on the east side and the station living quarters on the west side. In the ultimate configuration, the living quarters would be converted to more training office and classroom facility. In the middle part of the screen, you can see the proposed south. of the screen, you can see the proposed south elevation. And this is the elevation that would be visible from the Training Center area inside of the parcel. And then on the bottom part of this screen, you can see that we have the easterly elevation and the proposed west elevation, again, sans the landscaping treatments. Next slide, please. And here we have the color board, the types of materials and, and the features that would be visible. We have a metal roof, hemlock green color, exterior stucco with smooth finishing. And we also have medium bronze and metal sectioned boards, overhead doors, windows, et cetera. You can see the close-up views of these colors and materials along the bottom part of their screen. Next slide, please. This is an overall schematic of what the planting plan is conceptualized to be. So a lot of the light green that you see, or all of that light green that you see spread throughout the parcel, that's a hydro seeding for disturbed soil. As Ditas mentioned earlier, we're going to do a mass grading plan to level out the site to the rough grade of what it's going to be. And that's to prepare the site for the final facilities and construction of the concrete areas, the vertical structures. The mass grading will include the grading of the basins on the west side. It will include construction of the drainage, sewer, waterline facilities, and of Ardmore Road that you see on the east side, or the bottom of the figure on the screen. This construction is intended to commence fairly soon, in the next few months, and would be complete by the end of the year. And Ardmore Road, that extension, will serve as the, for another project that the city's undertaking, the Golden Hill-Union Road Roundabout Project. And the next slide, we'll take a closer look at the details of the ornamental planting and the frontage. Thank you, Warren. So in this particular area, you can see that we have a lot of color that is being proposed for the frontage area, make it pleasing and attractive, while still being a very safe and fire-safe type of landscaping. So we worked with the architect, we worked with Fire Station personnel, to come up with a plant palette that is recommended for fire-safe installation, kind of lead by example, if you will. We also have in that center, between the two driveways, it's an oak tree that we are purposely preserving. We are avoiding the critical root zone, and we are landscaping around that critical root zone, and making sure that we had all our layouts to safeguard it and also highlight it at the entry of the Safety and Training Center. We have ground covers throughout. And one thing that I think is worthy of note, we have the mitigation trees here. We have oaks that are the same species, the valley oak, locally originated here. So that, our intention is to, per the biological report, mitigate for the oaks that are being requested to be removed on-site. Next slide, please. This is the planting palette, showing the types of trees, the color accents that we are proposing, architectural accents around the building areas. Landscaping materials also include the ground covers and the hard rock skates. We're looking to also have very low water use, and give irrigation to the ornamental landscaping. There will be no irrigation to the hydroseated areas that cover the majority of the site in this first phase. Next slide, please. This is the fencing plan, and we're approaching this in a step process. So in the first phase, we'll be putting what you see there in the red and the green. And the red is intended to be permanent, and the green is quasi-temporary. In other words, part of it may stay, part of it may be revised, as the facilities and the city makes further decisions. The materials that you see at the bottom of this graphic show the chain-link fence with privacy slats. That's intended for Phase 1 permanent and Phase 1 temporary. Phase 2 permanent, currently, we show the split-block fence, and we show the iron finial tops. That's in the blue area that you see around the police facilities. That's intended for future installation when the police facilities are constructed. And of course, to provide not just physical hard security, but also a visual screening. Next slide, please. In this slide, what we're highlighting are the areas that are being constructed in the phases. So as you can tell, the areas that Ditas spoke to in the earlier slide are those green and blue areas. That's Phase 1 vertical improvements, including also the grading improvements that are anticipated to be permanent in nature. So on the top of this graphic, that's the west side of the property, we have the grading soil, and we have the sewer line, and maintenance road for that sewer line. Then we have the basins that are there to handle all of the water quality treatment needs for the facility, the ultimate Safety and Training Facility. The green areas are what is being constructed in Phase 1 improvements. And you'll note that that also includes the Ardmore Road constructions, and the basins to handle the water quality needs from the runoff of Ardmore Road. Next slide, please. This graphic is a bit messy, granted, but this is what us engineers work with to highlight the grading aspects of it. This mass grading plan shows that we are grading to emulate what is happening in the existing condition. We have a high area on the southeast corner, that's in your lower-left portion of the screen graphic, and a lower area in the northwest corner, and that's in the area there with the cursor. So as we mass grade this site, everything continues in the, that drainage pattern, and over to either the basins, either one of the basins that are connected truly. And ultimately, there's a culvert that crosses Union Road. That culvert is an 18-inch culvert that takes the loco from lower storms. And then, Union Road acts as a conduit for higher-volume storms. So it's a combination of different paths for the storm water, depending on the frequency of the storm. Next slide, please. This graphic shows the lot split, what's intended. And you can see on the southern portion, now, south is to the bottom of the screen, that's the remainder parcel 2, that the city will either choose to use for additional facilities, or choose to sell off. Parcel 1, in the upper part, is what we're talking about for the Safety and Training Center. And we are proposing drainage easement, and sewer easement on the west side, left side of that screen, and a road easement for the Ardmore Road extension on the right side of that graphic. And next slide, please. And this slide is where Darren speaks to the oaks. Darren?
Thank you, George. So concurrent with this project is a request to remove three oak trees. There are a total of five oak trees on the site, including one tree in the area where the Ardmore Extension would be continued up to Union Road. So on the slide here, the large, two large oaks up on Union Road. Tree number one is the circle on the left there. That's the tree that's in a good condition. That's the tree being protected and being designed around as a focus point of the entry to this emergency services center here. There is a second oak, tree number two, adjacent to, on Union Road there. The tree is in poor condition, and that is one of the trees requested for removal. Tree number three is a small, multi-trunk tree within the Ardmore Road Extension. This is a fairly small tree with multiple trunks coming up from the ground, more of kind of a bushy-type oak, and that's being proposed to remove. And then tree number four is also a, an oak proposed for removal. This tree is mostly dead, and needs to be removed. And then tree number five, back on the corner, is in good condition and being protected. So with the biological report that was done by Outhouse and Mead, Corey Meyer, the project arborist, the information within the biological study is where the, the oak information is located. The data table here kind of outlines the trees and indicates their health. But better to see photos to show kind of what these trees look like. So these are photos of the trees proposed for removal. The tree number two, the picture on the left, is the large oak up towards Union Road. As you can see, there's many past failures, and a lot of stem dieback up on the, the upper branch areas. The tree to the right is the multi-trunked tree in the area where the Ardmore Extension would go. And then this is the tree number four, located on the, kind of the back third of the project, that a lot, majority of this tree is dead. So these are three trees out of the five that are proposed for removal. As mentioned before, this project will go up to the City Council with a request for removal of these three trees. And then in terms of what we're looking for, the Planning Commission to act on tonight. So number one is to, for the Planning Commission to consider making a recommendation to the City Council to approve the mitigated negative declaration for the project, to recommend the City Council approve the development plan, along with the conditional use permit for the project, recommend that the City Council approve Draft Resolution C for the tentative parcel map, and recommending approval of the oak tree removal resolution. Other options that the Planning Commission could take is to amend the above list or action, or to refer the project back to staff or the DRC for additional analysis, or to make findings to deny the application. And one last thing, I'd like to maybe go back and, Warren or George, whoever's running the slides, if maybe we can go back to that, the site plan that shows the emergency, the Fire Station, as well as the Police Department buildings. I wanted to talk a little bit about the phasing. So this plan here is showing the, the initial Fire Station building. Then there'll be the addition of Phase 2 of the Fire Station building. So the architectural plans that we have before us in this package tonight are generally for the Phase 1 Fire Department building, the Fire Station 3. The way that we've set up this development plan is, the environmental review went over the whole site, including the, the parcel number two indicated in the parcel map. It also, the architecture is generally for the first phase here. We don't have the design and the architecture for the other buildings, but the way we've set this up is that this first phase, this first-phase Fire Department building would really set the stage architecturally, materials-wise, step the tone for the architecture for the rest of the, the buildings in the future phases. So the intent is that when, when Phase 2 comes forward, and it could be that we see the Fire Department wanting to do their ultimate building before the Police Department is ready to move forward with their building. So there could be some subphasing in the future as well. But this is the master plan we're looking at. And we would come back to a DRC level for the each phase beyond Phase 1. So if the, when the Fire Department's ready to go forward with their final phase on their building, we'll bring that project back. We'll go through the DRC, and we will review the project in relation to the elevations and materials and things of, of what's being proposed in this development plan. And then when we get back, when we get ready, when the Police Department gets ready to come in with their substation, we'll take a look at the, the architecture, the site planning. We have site planning here, and go through a major site plan review for those components, and see if, if that's something that can comply with this. And it could be that someday, the Police Department substation needs to be designed differently, or is different from this, what we see here for the Fire Department. And it may be that we will need to come back and amend this development plan to take in consideration a new design. But the intent before you tonight is that the entitlements for the Union Road Safety Training Center would be approved with the future architectural elements and components for the future phases to come back to Development Review Committee. And then briefly, we did process a mitigated negative declaration. We are in the comment period for that. The comment period will run through tonight and go to the June 15th, which is when we are intending this project to go on to the City Council. And the results of the mitigated negative declaration were mitigations related to air quality and greenhouse gas mitigation, mainly related to the grading and the dust control for the project. So there's some standard mitigations that need to be applied when this project gets graded. And then the other mitigations were related to protecting the remaining oaks, assuming we get approval for, from the City Council to remove the trees. The other two trees, there's mitigations related to protecting those trees. So with that, that was the options. And what staff's recommending tonight is option one, for the Planning Commission to make the recommendations to the City Council for the entitlements that have been presented to you tonight. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. One thing related to the public hearing, we did send out an addendum showing some public comments on some of the items on tonight's agenda. We did receive one public comment from Keith Hamm. He's the neighboring property owner to the west. Keith is in the process. If you've drove by the site recently, you can see there's equipment mobilized, grading the project for the AutoCraft, Autobody Shop that Keith is working on. So we're excited to see that project underway. The Planning Commission reviewed that project last year, and that project's underway. So there, he wanted to do some comments, I'm assuming he will be in public comment, but they, some of the questions he has is related to the drainage area shown on the screen above, in relation to some of the work, how that work comes over onto his site. And generally, we have the folks here that can talk about that further when the questions arise, dealing with the drainage from offsite coming onsite, heading to the storm drain on Union Road, and how these designs accommodate both the city's site, as well as Mr. Hamm's project. So we understand that there's some concern over that and question- over that and questions, and we have the folks here that can help answer some of those questions. And just so the planning commission knows, we have met with Mr. Hamm and his team to discuss this, and there was a, a lot of good questions and things answered. So I think some of the questions have been clarified, although we understand he's looking for a little more information, and we plan on working with him between tonight and as we go to the city council on this, on these matters. And we're confident we can work with them to come out with something that both property owners can work with, and it's ultimately best for the drainage of both sites. So we did acknowledge that public comment. And again, we'll see if Mr. Hamm would like to, is going to speak during public comment. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or the team is here, and I do see that Tom Ray, the architect, is on the screen as well. So if there's any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Great. Thank you, Darren. And thanks to Ditas, Chief Stornetta, as well as George, who you did a really nice job wearing multiple hats. And I'm glad you've got some relief now if you need it on the architecture side. I trust all of you will be present here because as we move into the next phase of our agenda, which is commissioners to pose questions of staff, some of your thoughts and expertise may be needed. And so with that, let's kind of march in order, kind of as we usually do as commissioners. Now I'll start with Commissioner Jorgensen. Questions you have of staff on this proposal?
I don't have any questions right now.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Neal?
Just one regarding the MND. Have we received any public comment today?
No, we have not, not on the mitigated negative declaration.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, questions?
Oh, I, I just want to say it's a beautiful facility. One of my questions I would like to ask is the landscaping. I appreciated the visual. Is the landscaping, Darren, supposed to be for the full site for phase one? Will be the entire landscaping done up front, or will it also be phased?
Yes, the landscaping will be phased along with the project. But if, I'm not sure if Suzanne Winslow, the landscape architect working on the, the project here can kind of give us a, she might be able to answer that question a little better if you would like more specific information.
But, but you're saying it will be phased so that when the public safety, or the police side comes in for phase two, that would go to DRC to look at the landscaping again?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And what I see is, is really nice. I'm pleased with that. And I think, I was on DRC, and so I, I think the only other thing I recall, and maybe another commissioner will bring it up who was there, was just the question on the, on the fencing, and I, I saw some more images. Again, I think when phase two comes in, my question is, will it be DRC that looks at the safety and security on the police side? Would it be similar to landscaping that would be reviewed again?
So the fencing plan that's been reviewed here tonight in the different types is the specific fencing that's intended for phase one and phase two. So as the police department's buildings come in and the need for higher security is necessary, that's where the, the masonry wall is shown. And there's certain heights and security that the police department will be looking at in relation to that police department facility. So we will be, get more specific when that, those plans come forward. But I do understand your, your question about the landscaping, because the landscape plan really didn't show the phase two. And we'll want to see nice landscaping along Ardmore Road on that side between, you know, the back of a curb or the back of sidewalk before we get to masonry walls to get, to help screen that. So
Yeah, I agree with that.
Hold on, the, the landscape plan here, but, but I recognize that, and that's something that we'll review with, with the plans as we get further into the future phases with the police department buildings.
Okay, that's all I need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kovarubias, questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Just one question, I think, for the, for our fire chief. Union Road in Golden Hill can get really backed up really bad, especially in the afternoon. Any concerns? I only see one out. It looks like the trucks are going to be exiting. Any concerns about traffic on any particular day when you have to exit onto Union Road?
We're not anticipating any more concern with that intersection than we see with other intersections or, you know, the Nibbuk Corridor in general. Additionally, we will have an alternative route of Ardmore Road that will be worked on simultaneous with the construction of the Fire Station Three. And then obviously, the new figure eight roundabout that'll be going into Golden Hill has been modified, and we've worked with Ditas and the planning department to make sure that the fire engines have adequate access through that and adequate lane widths.
Got it. Okay. And just out of curiosity, for anybody that SAFER grant, when, when, does anybody know when it does mature or when we have to act on it?
We, we have already accepted the SAFER grant, and we have been utilizing it for about two months now. But part of the parameters of the contract were that we construct the Fire Station Three, and we've shown them that we're in process of that right now.
Okay. And so once it's constructed, I would assume then it, it's intended to be fully staffed right away?
It is. We, so the SAFER, by adding the SAFER grant to firefighters, we do have the proper staffing right now to staff Fire Station Three. And we actually have two fire engines that are operating out of Station One, and we will send the second engine out to Fire Station Three immediately upon completion.
Got it. Okay. And just as a side note, Darren, really happy to hear that we're working with Keith Hamm on, on making sure that we work together to resolve any concerns or issues he may have over there, because I, I am also excited to see that his project is underway. So just, just a side note there. No more, no other questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Christensen?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I, I do have a concern about the, the traffic on Union Road, the speed of traffic coming from Golden Hill. And I'm wondering, has, has anyone thought to maybe have, say, a warning light there that would come on if there is an emergency or something that's out there to kind of notify traffic ahead of time that there's going to be, you know, these fire trucks pulling out onto Union Road? Has, has that been proposed at all?
I can actually speak to that. I'm Randy Harris, Battalion Chief Fire Marshal. We did actually work with the city engineer, David Athie, on that, and we are, he doesn't feel the need for it at this point in time, but we are preparing for it with conduits and stuff in the future.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it would be really smart. I, I think you're going to see a need for it, and it's going to happen very quickly, especially when you're rolling out of there and you guys need to hit it the ground running. Traffic coming down that road is, is, you know, maybe the, maybe the speed limit's lower than what it is. But, you know, personally, being on that road, it, traffic moves pretty quickly. And I, I think it would be a really smart addition to that design to give somebody a heads up that you've got a, you know, massively big truck coming out of there. And I know that they're cautious, but I, I think it would just really help since we don't have any solutions for Golden Hill and Union Road at this time. And we don't have the over, you know, the, the, the road improvements going in down the road for the highway and what have you. So that would be my concern, is that I think we probably wouldn't want to speed that up. And then I only have one other question. And I guess, it, it kind of goes to phase two, and Darren, maybe you can answer this. When they do go put in a phase two, and I might have missed it, but where is the public parking going, going to be for, for access to the police station? Is, is the police station going to share public parking with the fire station, or where would that be? I was trying to understand that on the, on the overlay.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I believe the crosshatched area, kind of the puzzle piece looking in between the, the building, or you can see the parking lot there in between Ardmore and the building. There's parking all along there. It's just faint. You can barely see the lines of the spaces stretched out. Now, some of that area will be protected for the police department personnel, but there is a public parking lot that comes in off of Ardmore in between the street and the building.
Okay, because when I'm looking at the fencing proposal, it shows both parking lots surrounded by wall and fencing. So is that, is that also including any public parking? Do we know?
Darren, if I might, this, this is George, and you are. The public parking space is shared. It's that space right there between the driveways. That's the intention. The other parking areas are secure.
Okay, so that's kind of what I was, I was thinking that's what you intended. And I don't suppose we have a, a, a lot of public parking, but it's going to mean that that's going to be coming off of Union Road. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And we did visit other facilities with the police department, and they confirmed what you just said. There's really not a high demand for public parking at any given time.
Okay. Well, just the fact that that would be an added addition to the traffic on Union, would have been great if it was allowed off of Ardmore. That would make a lot of sense to me, to bring that traffic in another location, especially people going to that police station. I think that's all I have for right now. Again, I, I think the concern over, or over maybe a signal of some kind would, I think that would be highly beneficial. Other than that, the, the project looks really nice.
Good points. Thank you, Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Gibson, questions?
Yes, thank you. I actually have two questions. So for reference, on page 77 of the, of the packet, it's identified as Exhibit A, C2. And then also, page 179, exhibit, also labeled Exhibit A, Exhibit A, or exhibit, one, first one, I'm sorry, is Exhibit M, C2. And the next one on page 179 is labeled Exhibit A. I, I have a question about the realignment of Ardmore Road, and I see that it's included in Phase One. And I was, I was absolutely fine with that. They made sense to me. And then, then I got to page 179, and I saw this drawing of a realignment of Union Road. And I guess it's maybe a two-part question is, maybe starting with what is the timing of the realignment of Union Road? And the second part of the question, why would, why would we need, knowing that we're going to realign Ardmore Road going in a more easterly direction at some point, why would we be realigning, spending the money to realign Ardmore, Ardmore Road now?
Warren, do you want me to respond to that?
Yes.
Yeah, and real quick, Commissioner Gibson, is there a exhibit that you saw on the overhead presentation that is similar to what you're looking at on the?
No, I don't. I, I mean, the, the Exhibit M, which is page 77, yes. The one on page 179, there, there wasn't. I did not see an exhibit.
So Ditas, it seems reasonable for you to address the situation. George, maybe we can get a, a exhibit up there that shows that?
It's labeled, yes, labeled, labeled Exhibit A, says draft site, concept, and phasing plan. It shows, says planned future realignment of Union Road. So the first one was being proposed is bending Ardmore Road to the west. And then this one on page 179 is bending it the opposite direction towards the east. And we just seem like we're spending maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars doing something that we're going to basically abandon at some point. There you go.
Okay, so let me respond to that. Actually, the construction of the realignment of Union Road and the ultimate realignment of Ardmore Road is all part of the project that we're doing right now with Caltrans as part of the improvements at Union and Highway 46, the cloverlit, a future cloverleaf over there, and a future over crossing. So the actual construction of that road is quite a few years in the future. It's about a $20 to $30 million project. And so we're nowhere near getting any kinds of funding to have that being constructed in the next five, 10, maybe even 20, 25 years.
Okay. So maybe a follow-up question on that, Ditas. I mean, that, that's a very logical answer for me. So looking at this Exhibit A that you have up on the screen, then it would seem that the, the current drawings are encroaching on this, on this site. So what are, what are your thoughts on, in terms of, again, phasing, phase one, phase two on this? It looks like it's taking off the, a north, a pretty good chunk of the northern, northern part of this site that's sticking out on Union Road and, and Ardmore. How, how significant is that?
You mean that leftover little triangular piece?
Well, it's basically taking, taking a triangular piece. I'm trying to match up the, what's being proposed with what's being removed.
Maybe I could jump in.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
Thank you. Warren, if you would be so kind to show the ultimate facilities, the overall concept of the PowerPoint deck, please?
Yeah, hang on a second, George. Let me bring that up now.
I believe that's slide number 12. There we go. So if we zoom into that area that you're referencing, Commissioner, you can see that we've got the fence line and the facilities pulled back to accommodate that line work.
Okay. So George, can I ask you, that fence line that looks like it's kind of bending, is that more or less a close proximity of where the, where the, the Union Road would be realigned to?
That's exactly correct. There is an offset to it, of course, but it does accommodate as it's coming to that portion of the site that you were noting from the attachments in the packet.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Thanks. I appreciate the answer. So let, I have a second question. On, on the Exhibit K, which is the, it's a, the fencing plan, it's a large, one of the largest pages identifying Exhibit K, LS4. I was trying to figure out the, the fencing, and I noted that it says the phase one permanent is either red, or red, and phase one temporary is the green dotted, and then phase two permanent is purple. So I was trying to figure out the fencing. I was following the long where the, the green phase one temporary was going. I noted that it, it, it kind of runs along in between, along the front, moving in an easterly direction from the, from the, what would it be, the northeast corner of the first building, running across to where the phase two would be over towards the police department, and then kind of meanders down in a southerly direction. And then it turns and bends and goes east and west along what is going to be the proposed property line for the second parcel. And kind of jogs around the, the retention basin. What is the plan on a permanent basis for the fencing? If the green line is temporary, what is the, what is the plan, the fencing plan, that's going to replace that green fencing that's on the, in essence, the backside or the south side of the, of the, of what's, where this shows the green dotted line? And what is the fencing plan around the second parcel? Because I'm not picking up any colors at all in the second parcel.
Right, you are, Commissioner. And the, the reason that we show the green line as a potential temporary is because the decisions as to whether or not the city will keep that southern parcel, parcel has not yet been made.
Okay.
So if a private developer were to purchase that remnant, then there would be the green line becoming more permanent. If the city were to use it and to allow interaction between the two parcels, then that green line would be temporary, and it would be relocated to the appropriate location.
Okay, so, but at some point, I guess my question was, I believe, I could be wrong, but the neighbor to the south is woodland, isn't it? And I'm just wondering if, is there a fence that's being proposed to separate that property from this one?
If the city were to keep that parcel, then yes, we would be relocating that quote-unquote temporary green to that southerly property line.
Okay.
If it sells off, then the developer of that parcel would be the one to put in whatever fencing.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I will just make a comment. I was on DRC, and I actually am in favor of the tentative, I guess tentative proposal to split off that parcel. And I think it's an opportunity for this city, maybe to recoup quite a bit of money and also provide a nice parcel for some other commercial purpose. So those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. I just have a couple of them. And I think one was on fencing, and I'll come back to that in the discussion. Because I noticed on the plan, it was listed as temporary. But in the presentation, George referred to it as temporary or quasi-temporary. So I think that helped explain that. But I'll come back during discussion piece and talk about the materials a little bit. I do have one other question on sheet LS2, which was Exhibit I, which was the more focused view of portions of the site plan. There appears to be a, and I guess what is it is my question? Is it a trail or a walkway or something that meanders back to kind of the west and then heads south on that graphic? It kind of abuts the drainage pond areas and it abuts the property next door? Yeah, shown on that graphic right there.
That's intended to be a sewer maintenance road?
Okay, hence the gate that's there and so forth. So that's, what's the surfacing of that?
It'll likely just be a gravel surfacing.
Yeah, I didn't see that called out, actually, as a surface treatment on any of the plans. And I may have missed that, so. Okay, that's my only question at the moment, beyond that. So next, we will move into, open the public hearing and seek public comments on this item. As Darren alluded to, there was a letter that we all received as an addendum to the packets from the neighboring property owner, Mr. Keith Hamm, who identifies he wants to contest this property for a variety of reasons. My notes showed earlier that he had dropped off the line and was no longer on. I don't know if he has returned. But if so, I think the lead comment would come from Mr. Hamm, if he's available.
Yes, he's back on the line. One moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Hamm. We lost you for a little while, but we understand you're back.
No problem. Thank you, Chairperson and Commissioners. I think this is a great project. The only thing I'm contesting is the swell that is designed on the portion of my property. I found out about it about a week and a half ago. And we are still negotiating the terms to get everything aligned with, you know, working with the city. But those are my only worries and issues.
Okay, thank you for sharing those. So noted, and Darren did indicate that staff is certainly committed for an ongoing working relationship with you to resolve any of those. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't show record of other people lined up to comment. Jessica, do you have any?
No, Mr. Hamm was the only one.
Very good. With that, we will close the public hearing, if there are no other comments, and turn this back to staff, or turn this back to the Commission, since there really weren't, well, let me back up one second. Darren, based on Mr. Hamm's comments, is there anything else you would like to offer? Or do you think you kind of covered that in your earlier presentation?
No, I think that we, you know, again, we understand his concern. And the team, I think everybody involved with the presentation tonight, on the Wallace side, the city side, is plans on working with Mr. Hamm to see if we can resolve this matter. This project will be going up to the city council, so there'll be more opportunity to discuss this matter if it's still an issue by the time we get to the council. But we're hoping to have it resolved prior to that.
Okay, is there any aspect of the adjacent property owners' concerns that would in any way impact motions that we make tonight? Or we just proceed on this as appropriate and allow time for this to sort out before the council?
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is recommendations to the council. We do have public comment indicating concern. You've acknowledged that. And we've acknowledged that we would work with the applicant. So with the motions, I think we're okay to make the motions, understanding that we're working with the neighboring property owner on some of the drainage matters.
Very good, thank you. So at this point, we'll go back to the Commission for discussion among the members. I'll go in reverse order. Commissioner Gibson, would you have discussion points you would like to bring forward?
I guess I would just touch on the item that's kind of been mentioned is that I like this project very much. And I was on DRC, so I had a chance to have input and to see this already. But I believe as staff indicated, there are some, kind of some holes in our knowledge in things that are not really decided, such as the actual final fencing plan. I just would want to maybe point that out again. And just so it's been made clear that we don't really have all the answers as we might have in some other projects, where we would actually ask or refer somebody back to DRC or back to the Planning Commission to finish fleshing out what their plan is. And I'm fine with doing that. And I do realize that the city is under a very tight time restraint in any regard. And there are some things, such as the police department, part of the property and the training has not been finalized. So I'm fine with that. I just, again, need to maybe feel like I should point that out again, that that is something that needs made, you know, people need to be aware of. So, and I would also probably recommend that whoever makes that motion, that we acknowledge the neighbor, Mr. Hamm, that in the motion, you know, saying something to the effect that the caveat with moving forward, obviously, is that that legal issue in essence gets resolved. So those would be my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Christensen?
Thank you. I would just, on that last fact from Commissioner Gibson, I don't feel like I know enough about what the contention is, although I'm looking at it, and it does look like there's, project is actually going over the property line. So that's, to me, would seem like a very big concern. I hear the city, what they're saying. I know we're on a timeline. And I guess maybe I should have asked further questions on whether this was truly vetted out or how much this was vetted out. But to me, it seems like a very intrusive point there that Mr. Hamm has. So that is a concern to me. I do understand the need to move this forward. I like the project. I do feel that maybe we just, and maybe I've kind of missed it, but I kind of feel like we just kind of walked right over that portion of it. I'm not really quite sure. And maybe Mr. Hamm could have explained a little bit better, but what the contention is there. I'm not sure how much of that, working with him, he's going to have very much say over if this project is moving forward. So that is a concern for me. And again, I am concerned with the public safety there on Union Road, the amount of traffic that is going to be increasing. And unfortunately, at this time, you know, the other improvements aren't done. And I feel that a lot of the calls, and maybe I'm wrong with this Fire Chief, but I have a feeling you're going to be turning left out of that driveway a lot. And my concern with that is that there's a lot of traffic on that road now. And I mean, I drive that, you know, I tow a big fifth wheel down that road quite often. And I know, and hope the police system isn't listening, but I probably go faster than I should. So what I'm saying is that I think that that should be in consideration, and maybe that warning light, something there to let people know, give a heads up that that's happening, especially since it's not a well-lit road at night. And that could be something that would really help, because I think that would be very important. Other than that, I feel that the fencing plan, yeah, that was a little vague, Chairperson, and I agree with you. That would be nice to have that solidified up. I understand the need for the shared parking. I'm a little disappointed that they've arranged it so that it's coming off of Union Road. I was hoping that maybe it was going to come off of Ardmore. And, you know, I'm not sure how much parking was needed for the evidence storage area. Maybe they could make an additional, you know, public parking on part of that. That's just my only thought for Phase 2. I feel that, you know, contributing a little public parking access off of Ardmore for the police station, I don't think it would be a lot of parking needed. But to me, that would seem like a very smart decision. Other than that, I will leave it to my other Commissioners to make their comments.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Corvus, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. You know, I also like the project, and it does seem to be a little bit rushed. I don't want to beat a dead horse here. And I think Commissioner Gibson and Christensen nailed it with regards to some of the concerns that we've addressed, the traffic and obviously working with Mr. Hamm. One other thing I will add that's a little bit, as I'm listening to other Commissioners, you know, we talk about building the fire department aspect of this quickly or getting this part of it rolling, and then talking about whether there's going to be a Phase 2 or Phase 3. We know there's going to be something, whether it's a police station or an extension of the fire department. It's just interesting, again, that we don't have that a little bit more concrete for future development. I know that there's a lot that goes into it. I know there's a lot of planning involved. But I do like the project. I just want to make sure that enough thought and planning has gone into this to make sure we're not missing something or trying to get this done so quickly that it ends up causing issues or concerns going forward with Phase 2, 3, 4, or however many phases there are. So enough said there. But I do support the project, and I do think it's going to be a very nice-looking facility.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Hi, I appreciate everyone's comments. I like this facility a lot. I hear Chief Sarnetta talking about immediate needs and the funding. I wouldn't want to hold it up. I'm confident that between now and the city council meeting, we could work with Mr. Hamm, that staff can come to some resolution. You know, I read the tone of the letter, and then I heard the tone of his voice tonight. And I'm, maybe I'm reading into it, but I sense that we can really work something out. I'd hate to slow things up. And I know that we have the other phase and DRC reviewing some phasing as it comes forward. So I would hate to slow things down. We need this facility, the sooner the better. So I appreciate everyone's comments, but I fully endorse the plan as it's proposed.
Very good. Commissioner Neal, comments, discussion?
I have a couple. So we are proposing chain-link fence with slats, yet every project that we see that proposes chain-link fence with slats, staff is concerned about. So I have a real problem with the city proposing the use of chain-link fence with slats as a part of the project. I think once we do that, we have given up any hope in the future of requiring an upgraded fence. So that's my first question, or first comment. My second comment is, I really like the idea of the fire-safe landscape and would like to see it used as an educational tool in the future. And maybe we could do an online brochure that folks could download and kind of pick the plants that are fire-safe and use that in their own landscaping as they change landscaping in their yards. And I think that's about it at the moment. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Jorgensen?
Thank you. Overall, I think it's a very good project, and I'm very supportive of it. I personally am not concerned about the traffic, because if the chief says it's okay, it's okay with me. He, they're professionals. They know how to drive their trucks and engines. So I'm not concerned about it, since they're not concerned about it. Let's see, my first comment was pretty much exactly what Commissioner Neal said about the fence. We need to be consistent. And if we ask applicants who've come before us to do something, we need to do it as well. So he phrased that very well, I agree. I was concerned about, I don't think it was a firm comment, but sort of the implication that when the police facility comes online, that it would go to DRC and not the Planning Commission. I'm not okay with that. That's an entirely different facility. And I would not be comfortable with that. I think that would need to come back to the full commission. The addition to this building, that's different. And I would be comfortable for that going to DRC. We've seen enough about it, and I think we're in general agreement with how that would be done to continuation of this building. And then lastly, kind of back on the theme of we need to do what we ask other applicants to do. I'm reading, maybe, I'm reading on the, let's see, what sheet is it? Exhibit 1, LS2, the landscape plan, that the planting that is right along Union Road is ground cover only, it looks like to me. And I don't think we'd appreciate that from other applicants. So I think we need to do something more robust and not just a ground cover that's right along Union Road. Other than that, I don't, I think the landscaping is appropriate. So those are my comments. I would generally approve this project, except I'm concerned about the fence. I'm concerned about Planning Commission having the ability to review the police facility when it comes online. And I'd like that modification considered for the landscaping.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. Like my fellow Commissioners, I fully support the project. I think, obviously, from the chief's presentation, it's a much-needed resource for this city to provide the service that residents expect and deserve. I do strongly agree with the couple of comments offered by Commissioner Neal and Commissioner Jorgensen. No surprise to my peers, I am totally opposed to the chain-link fence with slats. I think there's a precedent, or at least an example, the city needs to set here. And I know there's an installation across the street from this that has a fairly short frontage of either slats or lattice work or something in a chain-link fence. But this is an extensive installation by the city. And I think the city needs to lead by example and use a different material. That one's unacceptable to me. I also agree with Commissioner Jorgensen's comment about the police station being a little bit different animal than the fire station building, that that should have a more broad review by the Commission as a whole when that comes back. So I think with those two points, again, reiterating and agreeing with my fellow Commissioners, that's all I have to offer for discussion on this. As we've gone down the line, do any of the Commissioners have any of the discussion points that have come to mind that you would like to bring forward?
Go ahead, Gibson.
Oh, thank you. This is Commissioner Gibson. So I will echo support for everything that everybody said. I guess that my quandary and the reason I was asking some of the questions I was and making some of the comments that I did in regards to the fencing was that the idea that was temporary. And again, the dilemma in my mind is that we don't know how long. This is an illustration of what I was saying. We don't know. We don't know things that we normally would ask another applicant for. We don't have a timing, for example, on temporary fence. I also cringed at the chain-link fence, but the idea was that, in theory, the vast majority of it was coming down because it was temporary. So when I asked the questions like, what are the future plans? And really, what the answer was, we don't know. That was the answer. So I guess my, the question I would pose, either outright or rhetorically, to my Commissioner, fellow Commissioners, is... is, assuming that this is temporary, you know, what would be the thoughts on, what would you put up that, you know, would be temporary that you would then take down? But this is an example, like I said, that of where we're missing, we're missing some pieces that we normally would expect of an applicant. We would not normally just kind of walk in with that lack of details or knowledge on fencing as an example. So that would be my comment.
Okay, thank you. Someone else had another follow-up, I believe?
This is Sheri. I had a similar reaction to the chain-link fence, but I'm following Commissioner Gibson on this one in that some of it's temporary, and we do have some unknowns here. It would be nice if it could be a more aesthetically pleasing material, and we have held a lot of our applicants to that standard. So I guess I'm kind of on the fence, but I did hear temporary. I just wish I knew how temporary the chain-link fence would really be, that would be helpful to me.
Okay, thank you. There was another comment, I think? Somebody had? Any other commissioners have comments?
This is Commissioner Christensen. I was going to comment, kind of pointing out, I want to make sure it was very clear. I know Commissioner Jorgensen has a lot of faith in the police chief, and I do too, and everyone that works there for the fire department. I think my greatest concern is for the public, not because the police chief doesn't know how to drive the truck out of the fire station. I do believe they know what they're doing. My concern, again, is not notifying the people pulling out, it's people on the street going by. That's my concern. The volume of traffic and the speed of traffic, and I may be beating a dead horse here, but that is a concern for me, and I want to make sure that that's on the record, that I think that it's going to become an issue. If it's not an issue in anybody's mind now, I do believe it will be. As for the fence, I concur with everyone on the fencing. I think that it would be nice to have something very clear on timeframe, and it would be nice if they did try it, especially something that's going to be very visible from the street, you know, something that would look a lot more appealing.
Okay, thank you. And then I would, I think, close up comments at this point by the commissioners. I too have a concern, as I stated with the fencing, I also have a concern that many times in practice, things that are temporary or quasi-temporary end up being far more permanent. And even if you look at beyond the green line, the red lines on the plan were still permanent chain-link fence with slats. And so I guess I fall on side of not knowing how long and where, and therefore, I would not support allowing that type of fencing to be part of the project. I think need to make decisions as quickly as possible and put in an alternative that's more acceptable, and one that sets a better example for the community as a whole. And I guess we'll find out in the, perhaps when we get to the motion stage, about where that ultimately is going to reside. With that, as comments, discussion points from the Planning Commission, we are ready to take a shot at motions on this. There are four motions that are before us. A is the first, related to the certification of the mitigated negative declaration. B recommends action of the council on the plan development and conditional use permit. C, which we'll get to, is for the tentative parcel map, and then D is for the oak tree removal. At this point in time, do any of the commissioners have a suggestion on a motion on Resolution A?
Chairperson Kober, this is Commissioner Neal. I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to move to approve draft Resolution A, recommending that the city council certify the mitigated negative declaration for the project.
This is Commissioner Gibson. I will second them.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Chairperson Kober.
Aye.
Resolution A passes seven zero.
Resolution B, yes?
I'd like to try to attempt draft Resolution B.
Give that a try, please, Commissioner Neal.
I would like to move approval of draft Resolution B, recommending that the city council approve planned development 21-04 and conditional use permit 21-16 with the following amendments. Directing staff to work closely with the neighboring property owner on drainage and/or grading issues. Require the police facility to return to the full commission for approval. And change, requiring the change of fencing style from chain-link with slats to something more appropriate per city standards.
I'll second that motion. This is Commissioner Jorgensen.
We have a motion by Commissioner Neal, seconded by Commissioner Jorgensen. Any discussion? Last call for discussion on Resolution B. With that, I would ask staff to call a roll.
Commissioner Neal.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson.
Aye.
Chairperson Kober.
Aye.
Resolution B passes seven zero.
Any takers for Resolution C?
Chairperson Kober, I did the hard one, I think I'll cruise on into this one.
You're on a roll, go for it.
I'd like to move approval of draft Resolution C, recommending that the city council approve tentative parcel map PR 21-0016 for the project.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Neal and seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I would ask staff to call a roll, please.
Commissioner Neal.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson.
Aye.
Chairperson Kober.
Aye.
Resolution C passes seven zero.
Thank you. So what's left is a resolution addressing the oak tree removal permit.
I can do that one. This is Commissioner Kovarubius. Approved draft Resolution D, recommending that the city council approve oak tree removal, OTR 21-09.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kovarubius, seconded by Commissioner Gibson. Any other discussion on this motion? If not, staff, please call a roll.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson.
Aye.
Commissioner Neal.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Aye.
Chairperson Kober.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Very good. Thank you all for the thoroughness of review and motions that were put forward on that project. We are moving then away from public hearings and into discussion items. We have two of those this evening. The first is the EIR scoping meeting for the Landing Paso Robles at 4545 Airport Road. As I noted a moment ago, this is not a public hearing, however, it is a forum for comments to be received, both in verbal and written form from the public, and we'll get to that after a presentation of the project by staff. So I would ask you, Mr. Frase, is there a presentation you would like to start, or another staff begin, please?
Yeah, so let me just do a quick introduction. As you said, Mr. Chairman, this is an EIR scoping session. Typically, these are done outside of Planning Commission meetings, but due to the high-profile nature of this project and the need for, to maximize public input on the project, we've decided to combine it with the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission's role really is to act as a host tonight, to help facilitate the public and any public agencies that want to provide input on issues that need to be reviewed during the EIR process. So that's kind of the point to keep in mind. You won't hear from the applicant or the EIR consultant. Their role tonight really is to just kind of listen and observe what the comments are. We do have a contract project manager, Carol Florence, from Oasis Associates, that actually will be kind of running us through the scoping meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carol, and I think she's going to do a screen share and a presentation. Carol?
I would love to do that, thank you. I'm hoping everyone can see my screen, is that correct?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks, Warren. Good evening, Chair Kober and Commissioners. I am Carol Florence, contract planner, planning consultant, and a project manager of the Paso Robles Boys School project. I am honored to represent the city of Paso Robles and have been providing services to the city over a number of years in many projects. My familiarity with this particular property goes back to January of 2018, when I was retained as part of a team to assess a number of the city's surplus properties. At the time, the city was pursuing a different project for only a portion of the property, but we did have an opportunity to conduct a fair amount of due diligence surrounding the property details. With that said, I'm pleased to provide you with an overview of tonight's scoping meeting, the proposed project now called the Landing Paso Robles, and the process moving forward. If I could take a moment and introduce Team Paso Robles and the applicant's Majestic Realty Company's team, in addition to Warren and his staff, we have retained other technical consultants to prepare various documents. Todd Groundwater will prepare the requisite water supply assessment report, which will be based upon the recently updated urban water management plan and the proposed water use for the project. Our other team member is Joe Fernandez with Central Coast Transportation Consultants, who's preparing the vehicle mile traveled analysis that will be included in the EIR and a full traffic impact study. And finally, Swika, our EIR preparer, who was represented this evening by Ms. Brandy Cummings. The applicant's team consists of John Smekin, Taylor Talt, Phil Brown, Matt Vatter, and Tracy Zinn, their planner with T and B Planning, and I believe that we do have a number of the applicant's team with us this evening. Again, they won't be making a formal presentation, but perhaps if there's something that staff cannot address for the commission, they'd be more than happy to chime in, I'm sure. Again, for those of you commissioners who are old hands at the CEQA process, I want to thank you for your patience, and for those new to the commission, I'm hoping to provide you with a concise overview of that process. Tonight's scoping meeting is an early and open process for determining the scope of issues to be addressed in the EIR and to identify significant issues related to the proposed project. The initial study and notice of preparation that were attached to your staff report and are also uploaded to the city's website was also sent to resource agencies, other state and local agencies, tribal governments, and federal agencies. This scoping is an extremely effective way to bring together and resolve the concerns of these other agencies as well as other interested parties, such as the general public. I was just going to note, these two lower photographs are actually from the open house that was sponsored by the applicant Majestic Realty Company on May 13th, and you may recognize this is the front of the airport terminal. So moving along, tonight we'll cover a number of topics again, so I'm just going to thank you in advance for your patience. My way of project or property background, I should say, there has been quite a history starting back in 1947, when the first use arrived at the facility. The site was formerly an Army airbase and included over 200 acres and 40 barrack buildings, and I'm sure Majestic does not want to know this, but it was purchased at that point for $8,000. In 1972, the facility closed to declining commitments, but then reopened two years later in 1974 as the population began to rise again. Thirty-four years of the facility was under full operation until July of 2008, when it was finally closed for good, and while unoccupied, has been mothballed to control long-term deterioration of the buildings. Fast forward to 2020, the state offered the property for sale, and the project applicant was the winning bidder. As the slide notes, today there are 42 separate buildings, six family residences, over 270,000 square feet, and as everyone well knows, currently fenced for security purposes. And the site now, originally was over 200 acres, it is now 135.8. These next two slides depict the site in the context of the city, and this next slide, I'll leave that up for two seconds. This next slide is a close-up of the parcel overlay on an aerial photograph, and I'll just note the proximity to the airport. And again, here's the Cal Fire facility. Roadways, here's airports and Old Creek Road, where Wario Creek, to give you some context. As you can imagine, a project of this size and scale will require a variety of entitlements, starting with a general plan amendment and rezone to a best intended track map and oak tree removal permit, and including a development agreement. For those of you who are unfamiliar with that, it is simply a voluntary contract between the city and the property owner that details the obligations of both parties and also specifies standards and conditions that will govern the development of the project. And this is the project, again, called the Landing Paso Robles. This is the conceptual master site plan. Again, to orient you, here's Airport Road, Old Dry Creek, and this is the Cal Fire facility. As you can see, the site plan notes the variety of uses. To the east, a large warehouse of about 1.3 million square feet. And to, adjacent to that is an interesting mix of commercial space, including a hotel, offices, market hall, winery, and beer's retail and restaurant space. And if I said east, I meant west, I'm sorry. North is up, this large warehouse is on the western portion of the building, and the mix of commercial uses are here. So I'll just leave that slide up for just a moment. The project is proposed to be constructed in phases. Phase one to include the large warehouse space, and phase two, including the balance of the project site. Again, I can only imagine, as it goes through the process, some of the buildings may shift, the sizes may change, as well as the market will dictate the ultimate build-out of the Phase Two component. And a quick brief overview of the rest of the presentation regarding the California Environmental Quality Act. This is the state's primary environmental protection law, which was promulgated in the early 70s, and we have all been working under designing and permitting projects under this. The scoping meeting tonight, for example, is guidance provided from CEQA to public agencies, and it has been an interesting law to try to keep up with, but I think at its essence is really the maintenance of the quality of environment that we all enjoy living and working in California. So what is an EIR? First and foremost, it is an informational document that not only helps to inform the public, but ultimately the decision-making body. The project will be reviewed by the DRC and viewed as the Planning Commission as advisory bodies, and the city council will ultimately be making that decision regarding the project and the entitlements, as well as certification of the EIR document itself. One thing that the EIR does not do is to approve or deny a project, but it allows the decision-makers an opportunity to modify or, in some cases, deny a project based on the analysis. As importantly, the EIR offers mitigation measures to lessen impacts, and under certain circumstances, allows the decision-makers to balance the environmental, economic, social, and other conditions in their final decision. The good thing about this process is that it provides multiple opportunities for the public to participate. As you can see, the noted milestones are sequential and public to participate. As you can see, the noted milestones are sequential in nature, starting with the preparation of the initial study and notice of preparation, the scoping meeting, which we are at this evening, preparation of the EIR that also includes a 45-day public review period. Once that EIR is finalized and completed, it will be reviewed again by the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council. I think not only is there adequate time for public participation, but it is something that the city will encourage throughout this process. This slide represents the various, and I should say 18, different issue areas to be analyzed in the EIR, many of which I think are familiar to all of you. Anything from aesthetics and visual character, using the baseline of the facility today versus the proposed project, to the infrastructure aspects of the project, both on and off-site. And what I mean by infrastructure is water resources, wastewater disposal, stormwater aspects, as well as looking at electrical, gas, et cetera, so all of the utility and services. Transportation and circulation, I think especially listening to the public during the open house is a key concern to the public and certainly a key concern to the city as well, and we will have, no doubt, a robust discussion with that. We've already engaged with the county as well as with Caltrans to help us scope that traffic impact study. So, the, given those issue areas, the EIR will consider the change in land use, analyze both public and private improvements again, and how the project will be phased, and will clearly state impacts and the associated mitigation measures. So tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to receive public comments about what should additionally be addressed in the EIR. These can range from the potential impacts, mitigation measures, any other technical issues, comments on policy issues, and certainly alternatives to the proposed project. In addition to this evening's opportunity to comment, the public is invited to email or mail comments to Warren or me. As a reminder, the EIR scoping comments will be received until midnight on Monday, June 21st. So, in closing, I'll just walk through the next steps after the close of the scoping meeting comment period. Brandy and her team at SWICA will be, take a number of months to prepare the draft EIR, and will likely have that out for public review in the fall of this year. This will start the 45-day public review period, and we anticipate that the response to comments on the draft and the final EIR will be available in the winter. We anticipate hearings on the final EIR to take place in late 2021, early 2022. I should note that we received comments, I believe that were in your packet from the open house. We have also received a handful of comments via email yesterday. They were also provided to you as an addendum to your staff report and are also uploaded to the city's website. As Warren mentioned, while this is not a public hearing or time to deliberate on the project itself, staff does recommend the Planning Commission review the project, initial study, and notice of preparation, take both written and verbal comments on the scope of the EIR issues to be analyzed. And finally, we look forward to the commission providing additional comments on the scope of the EIR to staff. And with that said, I want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Both Warren and I, Brandy, are here to address comments from the commission, and with that, I'll turn it back over either to the chair or to Warren. Thank you so much.
Warren, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
So that concludes staff's report.
Well said. Thank you. Carol, you did a nice job going through that and laying out what's the beginning of a very significant timeline and road to see this project ultimately take place. I would also, again, highlight what you noted. There were numerous opportunities along this path for the public to become engaged, to review materials, and to provide comment that will help shape this at the very end. We are at the very beginning tonight, and commensurate with that, we are in a position to take some verbal comments if we have callers who would like to offer such. It was noted that we have received some written responses so far, and those will be incorporated into the record, and other written responses that will be received in the appropriate timeframe will be as well. Jessica, last time I looked, I didn't notice that we had anybody specifically in the queue to speak to this item. Is there anybody there?
No, we don't have anybody in the queue.
Okay. So, with that, we will move this back to the Planning Commission for additional comments on the scope of the EIR, and I think rather than following the go one way, go the other way, I'll jump around a little bit. Let's start with Commissioner Kovarubius.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Chairperson, sorry about that question. The large warehouse, I mean, a million square feet, that's rather massive. I know that the idea is to attract a large distributor for receiving and shipping. I guess my concern is, with cost of living here in our area continuing to grow, what is the likelihood that we would be able to attract a large, a large company that would use that facility as a distribution center? And when I'm looking at this project, that's one of the things that kind of sticks out right away. And then, of course, being a distribution center, I would assume that you're going to have large semi-trucks, large carry vehicles, and what impact is that going to have on our roadways through that Old Dry Creek Road and Airport Road corridor? So, looking at that warehouse, part of it, I mean, it's daunting. I mean, that's a very large, large facility, and what happens if we're not able to fill it? So that's my, that's my first comment. My second comment is, I'm noticing the loft-style offices, and there's quite a few of those, and I apologize, I was not able to attend the open house because of a prior commitment, but the loft-style offices, I'm assuming those are for investment or rental purposes? So I guess just in general, I'm trying to figure out or wrap my head around the types of businesses that we are trying to attract, and the impact that it's going to have on our roadways there in that particular area. And the businesses, obviously, are going to be looking for places to live, where are they, where are they going to reside? How are we going to house these, these employees for these businesses that are coming into town? And I think I did see some of the comments, and some of the comments that were already made to me verbally about the project. Just wondering, a lot of this hotel, winery, retail office, I get those are all great, vibrant types of businesses, but are we missing, missing the boat somewhere? Are we missing something that could be of huge benefit to the city, to city families, to, to, to the young youth of our, of our community? I don't know if we're addressing that anywhere in any of this, any of this project. Those are some of my initial thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Let me maybe offer a more of a blanket response to some of that. And a reminder, our purpose tonight is to address the scoping of the EIR, which is to identify issues that need to be assessed as a part of the environmental review process, be those transportation, and there was some reference to that, historic resources, you go on down the line, and Carol had done that with, with at least probably 15 or 18 different items. We will have ample time, as this project goes on, to address some of the, the design issues, the, the market issues, get into far more detail, obviously, on what is being proposed by the development team. But tonight, we're really focusing on the issues that are to be analyzed, and Commissioner Kovarubius, you certainly touched on some of those with the traffic, and maybe ancillary implications to land use and housing and so forth. But I would just like to, to remind the commission, we will have time to get into detail, and that isn't necessarily the time to do that this evening. Having said that, Warren, is there anything you want to offer just on the, the general site plan? Carol had mentioned that this is subject to change as it goes forward. Any guidance or wisdom you would like to impart?
Well, so I think this is the first cut at the site plan. What we're trying to do is establish that the maximum intensity for the EIR process. We do expect that the site plan will continue to kind of evolve as the project goes through the process. So I think the comments we've received, I think these are all good comments, and I think these are issues that we do plan on addressing at future meetings as the, the plans refined.
Okay, so I trust you're going to keep a record of, of everything that's put forward tonight in discussion points, whether it becomes an issue or an issue to be analyzed, or if it's something else that really needs to be addressed somewhere else in the process?
Yeah, I think staff, our consultants, and the project team are all going to be making notes of everything that, that, that comes up tonight.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Jorgensen, points that you would like to, to raise this evening?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I have a few. Let me see if I can find a logical order to these. It may or may not be. I, I guess I would like to have in the EIR some consideration of how the, how the, a, a large distribution center type facility like this can be, how is it, not how can it be, but how is it, or is it a catalyst for the development of the proposed business and industries in phase two? It seems like two entirely different projects, which may be appropriate. I'm not commenting on that pro or con. I just like, I, I feel like the, the EIR and some of its, some of these sections that you have on the screen right now, some apply to the entire project, some almost apply to two entirely different developments. So I'd like to know, since the distribution center is phase one, what kind of businesses would benefit from that? Does it, by definition, is it a catalyst for the development of other types of businesses? I'd like to know what the scale is of those other, of those other businesses, because a lot of the things I'm hearing, like loft offices and wineries are itty-bitty, and it doesn't seem like, I don't know, I'm concerned about that. Trying not to make comments, just ask questions here. I'd also like to know more about the number of head-of-household jobs expected to be generated in phase one, as well as in phase two. I don't know much about distribution centers, like, not anything, but I would imagine that the vast majority of the jobs are not head-of-household level income to support a family, and I think that's a real concern, that the quantity of jobs that, as Commissioner Kovarubius alluded to as well, are not sufficient to live in this community, in this county, in this part of the state. I'd also like for a study to be made of the balance of available and approved housing. We approved 3,000 units in the last couple of years, so, including the approved housing. A balance between the expected pricing, sales pricing and rental pricing of those units to the income levels anticipated in this project. If there isn't a reasonable balance, then what are the implications of that? And I would think that, that the EIR really needs to consider that. Let me see, what do I have next here? Um, the next, my next comments are related to the airport. My understanding from the open house is that freight is expected to be delivered and shipped in some manner, depending on who the tenant is, obviously, but air freight will be a part of this project. I'd like to know what improvements would be expected to have to be made to the airport to accommodate that, and who's going to pay for those? Also, on page 362E, it, it mentions that noise, the airport, airport noise is a potential, is a mitigated potential significant factor, but with increased aircraft use, increased proportion of aircraft that are freighted and large, large aircraft, I'm not sure why the assumption is that that's just a mitigated issue. So I think that, I'd like to know more about that. How can, how? How can the city be assured that phase two even happens? What, phase one is, is a very cut and dried. This is the program, this is what it will be. Phase two may or may not have any connection to phase one from a business sense. How, what happens with phase two? When might that happen? What is the connection between the two? How can the city be comfortable that, that, that nice development and the generations of design that'll occur to, to modify it, but that the really nice concept actually occurs? And then, lastly, there's a lot of demolition that'll have to take place for the boys' school, and it's old, and it's, I'm sure it has hazardous materials and so on. But I'm more concerned about consideration of sustainable demolition practices, and mentioned, there was mention of a lot of the materials will be ground, you know, can be used for road base and that type of thing, that, that's great. But then it said, and everything else just goes to landfill. So I'd like a discussion about some progressive, sustainable demolition practices and how those could be incorporated. So I think that covers my comments for right now.
Okay, very good, thank you. Commissioner Gibson?
Thank you, Chairperson. I, yeah, a few, a few notes here. It occurred to me that when, when they're going to be doing the traffic study, that, that I think we need to look a little bit farther than just what the immediate roads are, you know, Airport Road or Dry Creek, and the, the idea of running trucks, you know, through the Jardine neighborhood. It would seem that there has, would have to be a pretty, pretty intense look at all the interchanges, you know, the 46 101 interchange, the 101 on and off ramps, you know, every, every road that would be leading to and from the area, not, not just the local roadways, you know, getting on, on or off Highway 46. So, I, from a scoping perspective, I think we need to push the scope out a little farther, because we already have some problems with some of our local interchanges, and I think we need to be cognizant of what this project is going to do. I would echo what Commissioner Jorgensen's comments are regards to the airport, and I had written down, I'm, I'm just, I think that we need to probably have a look or have a conversation about what the impact of the phase one, which again, is, it's been cut and dried. Everybody said it was Amazon, and this, and then at the meeting, the open house, they said it's not necessarily Amazon, but it is definitely a fulfillment warehouse, a giant, gigantic fulfillment warehouse, and air, air freight, air cargo is going to be involved. So it occurred to me that I don't think our airport currently, with the current infrastructure, is capable of handling any amount of traffic, such as what I would imagine is going to take place. So I have a quite, I think that scoping should go into great depth into what, what is going to be happening to the airport, and again, who's going to pay for that, or how is it going to be upgraded? What are the, the methods that the airport is going to be upgraded, and what does that expansion look like? So, you know, the idea that, that we're going to do vehicle count is kind of a no-brainer, but it also occurred to me that on the same lines, we also should have some knowledge along the lines that were expressed by some of the written comments that were included in our packet, that, you know, what is the air, air freight count? You know, how many planes are coming in and out of Paso Robles, and what would the air traffic pattern be? I mean, are we all of a sudden going to create a lot of air traffic, you know, big planes coming over people's houses, and what, what, what does all the aviation? coming over people's houses? And what, what, what does all the aviation components of this come, how, how do they come into play? And again, echoing Commissioner Jorgensen's thought, you know, because we keep hearing, or at least I keep hearing, that, you know, all the houses are going to be built, that we don't need to expand the schools, for example, because all the houses are going to be $600,000 homes. But again, I'm not an expert on what a fulfillment warehouse is, or in terms of, you know, how it operates. But I'm guessing, like she commented, that they're not high paying jobs. So I think, again, this, this needs to be pretty in-depth scoping it as to where, where is the workforce housing going to be? Because it seems like we're not just going to be going along with whatever's been approved. All of a sudden, we're going to have to be in an accelerated pace. The, the day that this project gets pushed forward and they start on it, somebody better start building some workforce housing somewhere, because I don't think they, it exists right now. Which means we also do need to know approximately how many jobs would be created, and what are the wage levels? So we need to kind of go into some in-depth on, on that. So those would be my comments for now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Neal, comments?
No real comments. I trust that SWCA and the team will review the appropriate environmental impacts. I do have a couple of clarifications. I thought I heard in the presentation that the site was 135.8 acres, yet the scoping document says 136.3. So I know it's just half an acre, but it is, I think, a little bit different, unless I heard that incorrectly. And this is incredibly minor, but on page eight of the scoping, 2.4.1 Phase One Distribution Warehouse, at the bottom, it says a water tank and pump house would be located on the property to gain plus or minus 4,000 PSI for fire flow. I'm thinking that's gallons per minute. And I know that I'm not an expert in fire sprinklers and the structure and imagination, but I don't think you need 4,000 PSI for any particular fire system. So just, those are really my only two comments. Thank you.
Very good. That'd be a lot of pressure. Commissioner Christensen?
Thank you. First off, I, I just want to ask Warren this. So Warren, basically, what you're asking us tonight is just our, I just want to make sure I'm clear, and for anybody that's listening, you're asking for us to basically give our recommendations? We're not being asked to really approve or disapprove something of this nature. This is an EIR that the city feels needs to be done to move this forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's no decisions tonight. We're just at the very beginning of this process. So we are just trying to solicit from the public, as well as the planning commission, the range of issues you want to make sure are analyzed in the EIR as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So I echo a lot of my fellow commissioners' points, and I feel absolutely I'd love to see this expand beyond the scope of this smaller area. I think Commissioner Gibson brings up a very good point. How is this going to be taken in, out, you know, further outside the area? Because I think the impact will be far greater than just in this immediate area. And that, and that's in many ways agreed with, you know, in the sense with airport, air quality, noise, obviously, traffic, and safety. One thing I also wanted to kind of note, and I, maybe I'm just bringing this up as a point to be more specific, how does this incorporate into the city's Purple Belt Plan? How does that, is that, is that discussed or looked at in any way? And how would that affect that? I know that's been discussed before for other projects around the city. And this would seem that this is right at that, the edge of that city boundary. So to me, that would be a concern if the city is wanting to promote that, that purpose or policy. Other than that, I think, I'll keep it short. I'm just going to echo what a lot of the commissioners have to say. The, my concerns are the same as theirs in the scope of where this needs to go.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, could we go back to the site plan? I think it was just one slide back. And that was a couple back. Yeah, that's good, right there. It's just helpful to have that up in front of me. I have similar comments, and I, hopefully, this is helpful to the city as a lead agency, to the applicant, just, I'm kind of free flowing with my thoughts here. But if we were to look at this as a campus, I, you know, we, we talked about Firestone was a campus, and, and I think Robert is on to something. What's the synergy between the warehouse and the rest of the development? That's unclear. That would be helpful as we move forward to know and understand that better. I think as a longstanding Passeroblen, I think that, you know, it, what I see on the conceptual master site plan is a very, very large building. And if I looked at the numbers of square footage, you know, it could be developed more intensely, like six times more than the boys' school was. So to be able to see in the graphics, I think Passeroblen's will want to see, as they go through this EIR process, will want to see the size, visually see it, and want to see, okay, the four-story hotel, they want to see, you know, the, the synergy and how you, you know, you circulate within the campus, and then certainly how you circulate out to Highway 46 and to the airport. I think more detail will be helpful as we go through the EIR process, so that Passeroblen's can participate at their fullest extent. So I think there's confusion out there in the street, like, okay, not only was what's going in there is an Amazon, but there's confusion about, you know, the rest of the development. I think the more clarity that we have, the more useful that EIR scoping, or that EIR process will be. I, I think there's some good questions about the housing and the income level of the jobs that'll be offered there. And I, I think understanding, you know, if you, we're all, we're going to be talking about circulation. I know that will be a healthy debate here, but if through the EIR process, we can talk about not only what we have existing, but a vision for what we could have to make this work for everybody, that's what I would like to see more detail on, is kind of the, the vision, how this would work. So those are some of my thoughts, and I, and I have some of the similar ones stated previously. I hope that's helpful.
Very much so, thank you. I have just a few comments, and I would pick up on one of the points that was raised a number of times, but Commissioner Koberubius started with, and that's transportation. And it seems like the whole issue of air and ground transportation is going to be critical for this project. Ground transportation comes and rears its head, whether it be pretty or ugly, almost everything we look at in this community. Ditas, in the presentation on the first item tonight, talked about the Union 46 improvements taking five years, 10 years, or maybe 25 years. That's a huge gap, and that, obviously, that'll be addressed as part of the EIR. I would compliment staff and the consultants who put together the material that was in our packet. It was very thorough. Just kind of an observation, and having dealt with these kinds of reviews for a number of years, EIRs tend to be a bit formulaic. And I suspect sometimes there's cut and pasting doing to, to address certain things and mitigation strategies. I applaud Commissioner Jorgensen for coming up with what I think is some creative thinking on the demolition, for example, as to how that can be maybe utilized in a different manner, and maybe addressed in a manner that's not common to EIRs. And so if there's opportunities to be creative with some of the mitigation strategies or other items as a part of this, given the magnitude of this project, it could be really precedent setting for the community, as well as kind of the, the industry, if you will, for EIRs. So I would hope the, the authors would take some creative license and address some of those kinds of things in a manner that, that maybe thinks very creatively and proactively. I really don't have anything else. I agree with the comments the commissioners brought up. Would note again that we did receive some comments from the public that have already been entered into the record, and more will be. Two things I'll ask for, do any commissioners have other thoughts that have come to light? And then maybe we can do a quick check. Jessica, just to make sure that nobody else has jumped on the line with any public thoughts that they'd like to offer at this point in time, knowing again that those can be submitted certainly in written form, as well as in a variety of formats as we go forward in this project. Commissioners, any other thoughts before we close out this item?
Chair Cogler, this is Carol Florence, if you don't mind. I, I just wanted to remind the commissioners, just because you are hosting and sponsoring the scoping meeting this evening, please don't think that you can't also make comments through this period until June 21st on the scoping, because I'm certain now that it's been presented, that everyone will have an opportunity to really start pondering this. And I want to just make sure that we look forward to the commission's comments as well as the public's.
Very good. Thank you for adding that. Do we have any other members of the public that have come on in the course of our discussion?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, again, there's no action required. I trust that the, the comments and discussion points that have been offered by the seven commissioners will be a part of the record as appropriate as well, and there will be far more to come. And as you just heard, any commissioner is certainly welcome to roll up your sleeves and submit some additional comments via email as you see fit.
Chairman Cogler?
Yes?
Chairman Cogler, may I just make one additional comment?
Please do.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't get in there in a timely manner. I apologize.
This is timely enough. Go for it.
It's really, is a process comment. It's really sad that we don't have anyone, any of the public participating. And, and I think that's pretty clear, that that's a largely a factor of this being online and in our COVID format, which is just unavoidable at this point. But I'm just concerned that we make sure, as we go along, that there is some serious publicity about other opportunities for the public to participate, when, and particularly when there's more information to react to. That's it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I know the city did push out information via press release and social media. And this is one of those things, it's probably just a little bit early in the process, and I'm sure more people anticipate as this moves forward and, and more specifics are available, as you noted. Okay. Yes, Mr. Neal?
So I have done, in my previous life at the university, done quite a number of these scoping sessions. And I have found that very, very, very seldom did we get any public input in the scoping session. What we mostly received was input from agencies. So just because we don't have public joining us this evening, doesn't necessarily mean they will not be fully engaged as we proceed through the process. So.
Thank you for that. I'm sure that's true as well. And I think if practice holds, as frequently does, agencies sometimes come in at the 11th hour with comments. So I'm sure those will be received from a variety of agencies, both regionally, statewide, and perhaps federal as well. Any other comments? Okay, if not, we will move on to our next agenda item. And I, I thank the, the design development team for the project, and you, Carol, for your participation or the ability, willingness to participate tonight in this. And we will hear from all of you, I'm sure, a lot more in the future. We will now move in, great, we will now move into our discussion of the annual capital improvement program plan recommendations. And I would ask staff to lead this off with a presentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman Warren Fraas, Community Development Director. I'll be making the presentation tonight. So this is a item that the commission is required by state law to do periodically, which is a general plan conformity report and determination on the city capital improvement program. So capital improvement programs, typically called CIPs, prioritize the funding and timing of public improvement projects. So that could be roads, or parks, or even Fire Station 3. CIP projects need to be consistent with the city general plan. It's the planning commission's role to make a determination about whether these projects are consistent with the general plan. The city's right now in the process of adopting a new budget for the fiscal year 2122. That will include an update to the CIP. So that's what we're going to be asking you to do tonight, is make a determination on that proposed CIP for the budget, which will be adopted in June of this year. The planning commission determination will be forwarded to the city council for consideration during the budget process. The planning commission's determination doesn't actually restrict what the city council ends up doing, but they do need to consider that determination in their budgeting process. So on to the capital improvement program. And we've included the proposed program that's in the budget, or proposed to be in the budget. I pulled out this one table that's included in your staff report, that kind of summarizes the key projects for the planning commission's consideration. So we have miscellaneous projects. Those include like Fire Station 3 that we talked about tonight, that's included as a miscellaneous project. Improvements to parks and trails is included in there. City Hall, library, space planning. So there's a variety of different projects that are considered under miscellaneous projects. On the second section is the transportation projects. So a lot of the projects that we were talking about, let me zoom in actually on this. There we go. So you can see Niblick Road corridors on there, that roundabout at Union Road and Golden Hill, near the fire station, that's one of the projects on there. Werewell Creek Bridge and Roundabout, which is that parallel route that would connect the airport back to the, to the overall cities in there. The Union Road, Highway 46 Overpass Project is on the list. The South Vine Street Bridge and Realignment, that's part of the Gateway Project, is on there as well. So a number of the high priority projects that we have been talking about for a number of years are included here. So you can see, as you look at the CIP, there's different budgets that are allocated for different fiscal years, depending on where we're at in the design and construction project for these different elements. So the CIP typically looks at a five-year period. So you can see design money in some of these categories, construction money in other categories. And that's typically how these CIPs are organized. And then we have street repair, maintenance and rehab projects. And we have oversight committees that are typically looking at these items, but they are part of the CIP as well. And then we have the enterprise funds. These are basically the user fee funded portions of city services. That includes the water system, the sewer system, and the airport roads. So those are basically self-funding, but those are also included in the CIP. So in terms of general plan consistency, obviously, the general plan, land use element is one of the key parts of the general plan to consider. The, the biggest priorities for the land use element is the Uptown Town Center Specific Plan. So we're seeing a lot of development and growth in the downtown zone, basically infill development. Recently approved Olson South Chandler Specific Plan on the east side, over here, Beechwood Specific Plan, also on the east side, down on Creston Road, the Gateway Annexation Project down to the south 46 West area, and then the overall airport area as an economic development zone. And then we have the circulation element of the general plan, which basically provides the network of circulation facilities to support the land use plan. So as I pointed out, some of the key projects that are shown in the CIP is funding for the 46 East Parallel Route Corridor. So the Werewell Creek Bridge Project here, the Union Road Overcrossing Project here, as well as the Golden Hill, Union Road Roundabout are all included in the CIP. The South Vine Realignment and Bridge, that's the key part of the Gateway Project. Project. That's included. And then I mentioned the Golden Hill Roundabout as well. So those are some of the key projects to support recently approved projects that are included in the CIP. So in terms of your options, your options, your first option would be to forward a determination to the city council that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. Your second option would be to forward recommendation that it's consistent, but add additional comments or caveats that you want the city council to be aware of. Third option would be to forward a determination that the CIP is not consistent with the general plan. As I mentioned, that wouldn't actually restrict what the council could do, but is information that they would have to consider. And then fourth, you could refer this back to staff for additional analysis. Staff is recommending option one. We do believe that you can make the findings that is consistent with the general plan as proposed. Now concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Warren. As shown on the screen right now, this is an action item this evening. So prior to being in a position to be ready to take that action, we certainly need to afford commission members a chance to discuss and pose any questions relative to the CIP. And so let's do that. I'll start with Commissioner Gibson.
Thank you, Chairperson. I do, I do have three or four, and to some extent, a little knowledge upfronted, just more from my education. So Warren, on page 402, it talks about the sewer extension in the airport area, Phase 2. And there's, there's funding going on in the first column, and then also in the 22, 23 year. Can you just briefly let me know what, what are we really extending sewer line from along a road? Or what is that project about? What's that intended to fund?
So the city engineer, Dave Athie, I'll have him fill us in on that.
Okay.
Hi, Commissioner. This is David Athie. So the Dry Creek Road Sewer is actually a project that is, was already constructed. And Phase 2 of Dry Creek Road is being constructed actually as we speak. It's in, they're just getting started up. So that project is almost complete. Sewer funds were used for that, for that project, and it's mostly completed at this point.
Okay, all right. So my similar sort of question on the, on the next page, and maybe, again, give me the Reader's Digest version of, I understand what an enterprise project is, and I'm seeing that, again, it seems pertinent under the discussion that we're having tonight. There's, there's an airfield electrical upgrade being planned in the 21, 22 fiscal year, 1.1 million. So I guess, can you give me just a brief description of what that electrical upgrade is, and then maybe also address the use of an enterprise funds for upgrades to something like an airport as opposed to impact fees?
So the, David Athie again. So an enterprise fund is basically is a restricted fund that you can only use for a certain type of asset that the city owns. So if we have enterprise funds for water, wastewater, the airport, solid waste. So when you see an airport enterprise fund, it's basically monies that are collected at the airport. A lot of times, the airport gets FAA grants. This may be the case for the electrical, the electrical upgrades. I do not know the exact purpose of this project, other than they do have a lot of lighting on the runways. And I suspect that is, you know, they may be going to some type of LED upgrades out there, but we could find out more information and forward that to you.
Okay. And then could you, again, give me the, the short version of, again, so you have an enterprise fund that my understanding is either entirely or to a major extent funded by the activities going on at the airport. So at what point would you stop relying upon a enterprise, you know, activities going on at the airport and then have some sort of more direct impact fees? Can you kind of differentiate between the two?
Sure. So you can only use money collected at the airport for airport projects. So that, that's the key distinction there. But you could, the city can, the city council can direct general funds to airport projects. There is no restriction on that. It's just a restriction itself on the airport funds.
Okay. And, and the enterprise, the money coming from the, like, the airport enterprise are basically whether they like landing fees or ground leases, or what would that be coming from?
Yeah, I imagine there are landing fees, rents on hangars and other types of income that's generated at the airport.
Okay. So I just, again, was curious in light of our conversation we're starting to have of what's going on across the street. So next question is that I believe that I saw in some of the proposal for the, for the, for the landing, that the city would also have another yard. My understanding, there's a yard going to be built on, I thought it was Second Wind Way, but then yet another yard in the landing. Is that correct?
So there currently at the existing boys' school, there is a, a large maintenance facility that is located there. It's kind of on the west side of the, southwest side of the project. We anticipate negotiating, working with Majestic for the city to acquire that. The deal has not been made, but that is the current idea for that large maintenance facility. The maintenance departments at the city would be, you know, the, the anticipation is that they would move into that, into that building and utilize that for city, you know, maintenance type activities.
Okay. So that was basically my understanding. It was that there was at least some sort of a proposal for something like that happening. But I'm not, I don't recall seeing that in any of this funding. Are you aware of any proposal for any funds being spent on that that's in this document?
I am not aware of any funds in this document for that. That would be a future negotiation the city council would entertain.
Okay. All right. So two, two more questions. So in looking at the, the circulation maps, I noted that what is being proposed in all the various streets, that the Creston Road, in particular, Creston Road, you know, on the southern end of the, of Creston Road, going along up towards Sherwood Park. Right now, it's basically a very wide street that is two lanes. And then once you get to right about Scott Street, Sherwood Park, it turns into a four lane. But it was, it's being proposed on this, and again, and also in the funding, that it would remain as a two-lane road. Why, why would that be in light of everything that's being proposed to be developed? Why would there be money or funding to go ahead and utilize the wide street, you know, to the south and turn that into a four-lane road?
Just so I'm clear on your question, you're, you're referring to the adopted circulation element that shows a lane reduction from Niblick to Scott Street.
It's whatever document you wanted to look at. It's like, it's either on the, the large, the large, it's basically Attachment 1 or Attachment 2 that, that shows the circulation, and it has Creston Road as it goes from Sherwood South before it bends and, you know, goes to the city limits. And it's all identified as being proposed divided arterial. So why, why would, why would we be funding a two-lane road, knowing what's going on at that end of the town?
Sure, certainly. So we wouldn't actually propose to reduce the width of Creston Road. So right now, that road is overbuilt for the area and the anticipated growth on that end of town, based on the current and future traffic circulation that is anticipated from the buildout of both the Olson-South Chandler and Beechwood projects. And most of the traffic on the, call it the southwest, or excuse me, the southeast portion, that middle portion that shows two lane, as proposed to go to a two-lane divided arterial to provide a frontage road for the, basically to provide a frontage road for the residences that are along Creston. Right now, we have driveways that open directly onto Creston Road, and it is proposed to actually create in the future, not now, but someday when funding's available, to create a frontage type improvement that those landowners there would utilize and stay out of the arterial traffic. So that, that whole plan is based on current and future daily traffic that goes through that area. And that's why that is shown at that, at that level. I don't anticipate that project moving forward within this five-year budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So my last question, whoever from staff would like to take it, because the political, here's a political question is, it came up in, I think it was, I forget the name, what the document was entitled, it came up, something had to do with an aquatic center or a pool. And again, there's nothing in this document that identifies it. Is there anything on the horizon that, where the city would be needing funds to participate in an aquatic center, either in whole or part?
Yeah. So I think we have the development impact fees, which is separate than the capital impact program. But the development impact fees are based on needs lists of projects. We updated the circulation impact fees in 2018. So they're well aligned with this general plan diagram that's on the screen. The parks and rec fees is a needs list that needs to be updated. So there is a project described under the parks and rec fee for an aquatic center. That was a project, you know, that was discussed probably over 15 years ago. We don't believe that's a fundable project, or, you know, really a feasible project anymore for the city. And there's a couple other projects that, in terms of park facilities that need to be adjusted and changed, that also incorporate some of the park facilities that are in some of the new specific plans. So we do expect a work program in the near future to update the parks and rec needs list, and then the fee. And I think the question of that aquatics facility will be addressed at that point.
Okay. All right. All right. Thanks, Warren. Thank, thank you, staff. That's all my questions.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Gibson. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you. I don't really have anything of this time. Actually, Commissioner Gibson brought up a couple of issues that I had questions on, but it sounds like they were answered. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Kovarubius.
Thank you, Chairperson. One quick question, Warren, just from my own knowledge. I see that the city in, on February 4th, 2020, approved the updated six-year street maintenance plan. My question is, who dictates what street is, is repaired or dealt with when? I see the, I see the, the outline. I see, you know, Creston Road, Spring Street, and then, of course, it goes on and it's spread out over, you know, the four or five-year period. But who determines what street gets attention before, before another street?
Hi, Commissioner Kovarubius. This is David Athie, city engineer. So I'll handle that question. The, what we do is we go through and we analyze the city streets for their current pavement condition. We look at such things as traffic volume, you know, how, how badly deteriorated the street is. We look at a host of different things and come up with a PCI, and, which is the pavement condition index, and each road is ranked on that. And then we, we move forward a recommendation to the city council of that list of roads that we think, you know, based on their condition and a host of factors, should be fixed, and the type of fix that needs to occur. So not all roads need to be paved. Some just need maintenance treatments. It's, it's not a complicated process, but it is, there is a lot of data and information that goes into it. So you can balance out the monies you collect from the half-cent sales tax, and the number of, and you can, so you can maximize the number of roads you either maintain with some type of surface treatment, such as a slurry seal or a microsurface, or roads that you have to do more of a rehabilitation to where you would, you know, which you've probably seen before, the grind and overlay, or a complete removal and reconstruction. So we, we, we try to put a, you know, a, a day, try to use a data-driven process, but also consider some other factors. And ultimately, the, the city council approves that, approves that list.
Okay. So there's a, so how, just to make sure I understand, that ranking system that is used, how often is that ranking system updated? Did I miss that?
No, I didn't speak about that. So it's, it's updated periodically. I believe they're in the current process of updating that again at this point.
At this point?
Yep.
Okay. Just interesting. Obviously, we can't cover the entire city, you know, and get all of our roads done, you know, overnight. But it just, it's, it's interesting to me because I can see, I know of roads in our area that are in dire need of help, and they're not even on this list.
Yeah, that is true. So that, that is part of the challenge, is that you have roads that are in really bad shape. Unfortunately, the, you know, the problem that we, every city runs into is that there's just not enough funding. And so you, that's where you look at the amount of traffic on a road. You look at, you know, is it an arterial? Is it a collector? Is it a local road? And you, you know, you basically, some roads get sacrificed and other roads get fixed. And, and sometimes it doesn't make any sense to folks looking at it from the outside. But you're, you're trying to, you gotta try to maintain those roads that are in pretty good shape. You don't want to let those fall in disrepair. And then you also want to bring some of those medium deteriorated roads up to like a good level. But sometimes those roads at the very bottom, there's just nothing you can do, and they're, they're super expensive to totally rehabilitate. And so if those are the roads, like, you know, major arterials, if they're like that, then you, you know, you put your money towards that. Roads where you've got, you know, you have a lot of users using. It's, it's a difficult process, and it's, it's a process that, you know, you try to make as fair as possible, but ultimately, you know, it, it, you can't fix everything. So there are some, there is some disappointment there.
Yeah, I bet. I really appreciate the clarification and the explanation. No other questions.
Mr. Davis.
You know, I'm good tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neal.
No questions, and I'll make this pretty quick. I think I would have come up with this four years ago, since this is the fourth one I've seen. But in my past life, I used to do these for the university. And we would put in front of the funding P, W, or C, meaning preliminary, W, meaning working drives, and C, meaning construction, just to give an idea of where it was in the process. And it's just a thought and, or an idea, and not necessarily a recommendation. So that was, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jorgensen.
I don't have any comments. I'm comfortable that the CIP is in conformance with the general plan.
Okay, thank you. And I as well, in my review of this, think that this is compliant with the general plan. I do have one just net of a question. What is a Zenique Hotel? It's part of a sewer extension project? It sounds like more a private project. What is that? Where is that?
So the Zenique Hotel is over on Theater Drive. It is, can, is, is part of the deal with the River Lodge. As part of that agreement, the city, because, because that sewer line is shared between, you know, different entities out there, the city has decided to put that in, that line in ourselves. They're extending the, they're extending their water line that they need for the project. So that's, that's what this, the sewer extension is.
So it was approved as the Hyatt Place Hotels. Zenique was the underlying property owner, but it's actually the Hyatt Place Hotel.
Okay, thank you. Now I can picture where it is. So this will remain a Okay, thank you. Now I can picture where it is. So this will remain a public cost and won't be assessed back to any of the private parties?
That's correct. They will have to pay connection fees, though, which goes into the system.
There's some city properties that are served by this as well. So Zenique Hotels was just kind of a, a catch-all for everything that was going on. But there, there's a public share in it, in that, that we own the neighboring property that isn't served by sewer as well. So that's part of what this covers.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments that have come into any of the commissioners' minds as we've gone through this? If not, Warren, can you put the slide back up that had, there you go, right, probably right on track here? It would be appropriate if somebody wanted to offer a motion on this.
I'll go ahead and do that. I, I move that we forward a determination to the city council that the capital improvement plan included in the upcoming fiscal year 21-22 city budget is consistent with the general plan.
We have a very well-stated motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Cover Rubius. Any just question on this, any further discussion? If not, staff, please call a roll.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cover Rubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Chairperson Kogler?
Aye.
So motion passes seven zero.
Very good. Thank you. All right. We have the consent calendar to address, which is approval, first of all, of planning commission minutes from the May 11th meeting. Are there comments or motion to that effect?
Chairperson. I'll make a motion. This is Sherry Davis. I'll move that we approve the planning commission many minutes.
I'll second.
For May 11. Thank you.
I have a motion for Commissioner Davis. And did, Commissioner Gibson, did you persist with the second?
Yeah. Yes, sir, I did.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? If not, we will ask staff to call a roll, please.
Who was the second on that again?
Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Cover Rubius?
Aye.
Chairperson Kogler?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Very good. Item J on the agenda, other reports. Some comment on the HCOC zoning code update, please.
Yes. So staffs concluded their interviews for a consultant to prepare the comprehensive zoning code update. We are making a recommendation to the city council at their next meeting, which is next week. So once the council appoints or approves a contract with that consultant, we will basically reconvene the housing constraints committee and start moving forward with the zoning code update. That process will also include input from the planning commission.
I believe the next HCOC meeting is still set for June. Is it 17th?
That's a tentative. We're going to see how the schedule with the new consultant works out. So that may change.
Okay. And did we pass on the May meeting because of the hiring of the consultant?
Yes. We were using MIG to run the first two HCOC meetings, but their, their scope's been exhausted. So we can't do any more work until we get a new contract.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Item two under other reports, Railroad Street Ad-Hoc Committee.
Yes. So the Planning Commission's appointed an ad hoc to work with staff to develop a streetscape standard for railroad street. The first meeting will be tomorrow. It's a virtual meeting at 10:00 AM. We've issued an agenda for that. So Commissioners Christensen, Jorgensen, and Kogler, we would expect to be at the meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay. And are my fellow commissioners available to attend? We all three going to be there?
I will.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Perfect. Great. All right. We've got the DRC schedule again, as presented in front of all of us. Any conflicts that anybody's come up with that we need to address tonight?
I actually do have one, and I am embarrassed to say my very first one in June. I cannot make the June 7th. I can't guarantee I have Wi-Fi connection to cover that meeting. If someone could cover for me, I'd be happy to pay the favor back in the near future.
Anybody available?
You're already there.
I'm there, yes.
I'm available. This is Commissioner Cover Rubius.
That would be awesome. Thank you, Rob.
Rob will substitute for Sherry in that meeting. Sounds good. Any others? Okay. We've got a schedule, and it's all on calendars, I presume. Item number K on our agenda is planning commissioner comments. What order, what order? Let's start with Commissioner Neal.
No comments.
None. Commissioner Davis?
No comments here.
Mr. Cover Rubius?
No comments.
We are a quiet bunch tonight. Commissioner Gibson?
I, I just have a question for staff. Warren, could you help me understand? I've been reading today, yesterday and today, that the Riverwalk Terrace Apartments, that I thought both we and the city council had approved as going through some sort of a public hearing. I mean, what is, can you provide some understanding as why that would be?
So I believe that's related to the tax credit process. They've applied for basically public funds to fund the project. That's very typical of these very low-income projects. So I believe that public hearings related to that, but I can confirm that and follow up.
Yeah, I was, I was just kind of scratching my head. I was wondering why they were having public hearings and meetings when I thought it had already gone all the way through the city council. But if, yeah, if you could educate me on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Christensen.
I have no comments. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jorgensen?
No comments.
And I really have no comments either. This is kind of like an old-fashioned planning commission, where we have a number of agenda items that are all substantive. So I trust we'll have more of this in the future. With that, we'll move into staff comments.
Yeah, a couple update items. So the COVID emergency declarations are winding down at the state level. The governor is going to be relaxing and removing a lot of the safety standards come June 15th. We do expect that we're going to be able to move back into meetings in person. The exact schedule for that hasn't been determined yet. It could be as early as July, or it possibly could be August. So as soon as we actually get some confirmation, we'll let the planning commission know. Some meetings, I think, will continue to remain virtual. It seems like the DRC meeting format actually has worked really well for everyone, including the applicants and staff and the commissioners in a virtual format. So for the time being, the plan will be to continue to hold DRC as a virtual meeting. I think, you know, we can reassess that later in the year if there's any concerns about that format. And then in terms of city hall, we are going to be partially reopening, starting June 1st, which is next Tuesday. We will have limited hours. We expect to be open basically from 10 to 3:00 Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, starting next week. We're going to see how that goes in terms of development services. Pretty much for the last year, it's been 100% virtual, and it seems like it's actually worked fairly well. So we're going to be assessing how many actual physical, you know, customers we get in and be briefing the council on that. And then we'll make determination about exactly what the formal city hall schedule will be after June 15th. So we'll let you know as that moves along. And then in terms of upcoming projects, we've got a couple light industrial buildings scattered kind of around town that look like they'll be on your agendas in June and July. The parklet program is, been referred over to the Parking Advisory Commission for review. The Parking Advisory Commission will be meeting on June 9th in the morning to review the question of long-term parklets and their impact on downtown parking. We do expect that a number of the restaurant owners will be making a presentation at that meeting. That will be a virtual meeting. So any planning commissioners that are interested, we can, you can definitely attend and listen in on that. If that project moves forward, it will involve the planning commission. But right now, we're kind of at a, a point where we're just trying to assess the downtown parking impact. Pass Robles Hotel, the four-story hotel on Pine Street, we're still refining some of the issues that came out of DRC, but that likely should be ready later this summer for hearings as well. And I think that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Just a quick follow-up question. The parking committee meeting, do you say that was June 9?
Yes.
And what time of day?
I believe they're at 10:00. Katie said 10:00 is correct.
Okay. And if a commissioner would like to listen in, if not participate, the link will be available how?
So we can definitely forward you a connection. I believe when they post the agendas, which is usually within 24 hours, there's information on how to join the meeting there. So we can just forward that out, whatever that information is, to all the planning commissioners before the next, well, there's a parking meeting tomorrow. So the following parking meeting, we'll forward that information out to the commission.
Okay. And at our last planning commission meeting, we had a couple weeks ago, the parking commission was going to be meeting the next day. Did that meeting occur?
Yes, they did. And that was just a kind of overview on the parklet. It was more just a briefing on where the current program is, and that the council had tasked the parking commission with reviewing the issue further. So based on that presentation, they decided to formally agendize it for discussions on June 9th.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We are now ready for a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn. This is Commissioner Christensen.
Motion by Christensen. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Gibson. We'll assume all in favor, but we'll just say it all in favor. Please say aye.
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 All right. We're out of here, folks. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.